No.
Read them.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, I want to get started.
Read it.
They're hoping that you don't.
Okay, I will take a roll call for the open workshop. March 27th at 6:11.
Mary?
Sure.
Trustee Alonso is here. Trustee Cruden is here. Trustee Desmond is here. Trustee Finerty is here. Trustee Munoz is here. Trustee Ryan is here. Trustee Bellato is here. Vice President Wilbeck is absent at this time. And President Brodrick is here. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to the superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Meda. Good evening, everyone. Over the past few weeks, we have found non-credible threats to our school district. During that time, the police and Bayonne Board of Education have been working together to investigate each of those threats. To date, each has found to be non-credible. Additionally, we have identified two of our own students as originator of some of this inappropriate use of social media. Rest assured that we -- that conduct such as this will not be tolerated. We have taken swift and appropriate action regarding these two individuals, and the consequences will be appropriate and severe. The police are still investigating the other postings, and we expect closure very soon. In the meantime, the Bayonne Board of Education has committed to various initiatives designed to protect our students and staff. Walk-through metal detectors, wands, and additional personnel have all been approved by the board. We have already received 13 of the walk-through detectors and 25 handheld wands. Additionally, we are currently training our staff regarding the proper use of the new safety devices and protocols that we are employing. Our timeline will have us at full operation when we return from spring break. As you know, the mayor, director of police safety, public safety, and police chief have deployed police to each of our schools. Also, our safety teams continue to meet to refine our procedures and make recommendations for new initiatives. As always, the safety of our children and staff is our first priority. This month, in addition to the media postings, we had severe weather and closed school for six days and had a delayed entry as well. I'm happy to report that we had excellent student and staff attendance following the school closing and delayed opening. For example, last year, our delayed opening in March had 89 teachers absent and 87 percent of students in school. This year, our delayed opening reflected only 58 teachers absent and 90 -- almost 90 percent student attendance, 89 percent. Mr. Koubert, Mr. Pacina, and Mr. Caola did a magnificent job with their staffs ensuring that all of our campuses were ready for students and staff, and I wish to thank them publicly tonight. Now, I know it's hard to believe, but we are at the point in the school year where we begin the staffing procedures for September. Mr. Lopez and I will begin meeting with building principals to discuss expected vacancies. To be proactive, Mr. Lopez has been attending several college career fairs to recruit new teachers to our fine district. Speaking on the topic of employment, Mr. Lopez will now explain the job fairs our high school students will be attending and will give you information for our upcoming spring career fair. Mr. Lopez?
Thank you, Superintendent. To begin with the staffing process, principals have been sending their requests, concerns, and recommendations for the individual buildings. Principals and directors will be setting up committees to interview candidates for anticipated vacancies. The principals and directors will have ownership of the interview and recommendation process, prospective candidates will be interviewed by the school committee, demo a lesson, then interviewed by myself, and finally, Dr. Wanko, who will make his recommendation to the board for each opening. Last Thursday, I attended the NJCU's education career fair to recruit candidates and will continue to do so at college fairs throughout the state over the next six weeks. In keeping with our mission to ensure our students are college and career-ready, our staff has done a wonderful job exposing our students to new opportunities. On April 25th, BHS juniors are attending the New Jersey National College Fair at the Meadowlands, where representatives from 400, two-year and four-year colleges, nursing schools, business schools, and trade schools will be in attendance. Our students have also taken trips to union training centers, technical institutes, and various work sites. On April 18th, BHS students will be attending the Career Awareness and Job Expo that is hosted by the Port of New York and New Jersey's Council on Port Performance, and we will once again be partnering with the Hudson County One-Stop Career Center to host our spring career and job expo in the ice rink gym on May 22nd at 6:00 p.m., and we will be promoting that event to our Bayonne High School juniors and seniors. As soon as that flyer is ready, I will make sure that I email it to everyone, and we'll get that up on our Facebook, our website, and we'll be sending that out to all of our juniors and seniors. That's all I have. Dr. Wanko.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Last Thursday, President Brodrick and I toured the district-wide forensic competition held at Midtown Community School. Also on that day, I attended and was the guest speaker at Bayonne High School's World Language Honor Society. 91 students were inducted into four honor societies associated with the study of foreign languages at Bayonne High School. I also attended the induction ceremonies and served as a guest speaker for the National Junior Honor Society at Midtown Community School earlier today. When we return from spring break, students in grades three through 11 will move directly into the spring state assessment season. Dr. Degnan has been working closely with the testing office as well as the technology department for the month-long park testing cycle. It's a 30-day window. Training has taken place, and test administrator assignments and student testing rosters are almost complete. Dr. Degnan will now report on park, the elementary promotion-retention policy we have been discussing at the past two open workshop meetings, and the Field of Heroes Veterans plaque. Dr. Degnan?
Thank you, Dr. Wanko. And just to bring everybody up to date where we are with the park testing, and I'm sure you know, following through with Governor Murphy's pledge to end high-stakes park testing, the Commissioner Lamont Repalet informed districts that he would be forming an advisory group to study ideas for the next generation of testing, as well as a tour of every county to hear from students and teachers regarding the park testing. He also indicated that he would do a review of the graduation requirements tied to testing would also be conducted. Right now, you need to pass the -- meet expectations on the algebra one and the English 10. What are we doing in our district to prepare for the park, which will start as we come back from spring break? It's really a year-round training planning. It starts in July. But by the end of November, and I'm just going to give you a short timeline of things that have to take place to put this in place. We have to make sure our data is uploaded to NJ Smart, which is a state portal, and that ultimately moves to Pearson, which is the park portal, and it's an extremely important upload. And it must be done with accuracy as possible because once this upload is done, each student must be added or updated individually into the portal. So what we're looking at is students that move in and out of the district, student classification changes, students are removed from class, student classes are switched. So there's a lot that goes on up until November. And then between January and March, we start to set up test sessions, which are reviewed and updated as they are made. Pearson creates our supply order based on the Pearson portal, and what you'll see is the amount of paper-based tests we need, the amount of sessions, the amount of students that have to be imported, and the amount of test administrators that would be taking place. We also during this month, myself and Mr. Fogu, went to training where we are trained on the test, and again, we then turnkey to our park data teams for each school where they turnkey to the staff. Principals will provide security training for all staff, and we provide PowerPoint slides. So there's a lot of logistics going on between calculators, pencils, scratch paper, graph paper, et cetera. Finally, the last part is this month, we're all set. Supplies are delivered this week before we leave for the break. We will get a lot of the materials for the park, and then when we return, we'll just make sure everything's organized. Test locations will be set in a high school as well as in the elementary. Again, our goal in the high school is to make sure that we have large testing sites, and that would be our plan to reduce the impact on instructional time. So we'll use the north gym, the south gym, the north calf, south calf. We'll use the boarding room, and we'll shut down the ice rink. So there's a lot of planning that goes into the park, and we relieve her up to the task, and that's where we are. But again, from what we're hearing from the governor is there may be a next-generation test, but it might not be the park. So we did move away from Common Core. We are now in the New Jersey Student Learning Standard, so it makes sense. There should be a test that--
But I'm still here to stay.
Yes, and we've discussed this for, what, three or four years now?
Yeah.
So we'll be waiting to hear from the commissioner, and that's where we are with the park, and that will be a whole month of testing. We did meet with the curriculum committee to talk about our Field of Heroes. The Field of Heroes is an annual event, and in two years has raised over $10,000 for educational veterans efforts, and so far, there have been 12 honorees with six or more expected for the November 1st, 2018 ceremony. The district recognition committee was in place. There was a request for a commemorative plaque. We did review it, and we brought it to the curriculum committee, and our recommendation is to have a plaque to honor these veterans. We would put the -- we don't have the schematic yet, but we started this planning stages, and it would be similar to what's in the Bayonne High School Hall of Fame, where we -- each year, we will put up the branch, we will put up the years of service, and the honoree's name with the year that they were inducted. Anybody on the committee want to comment? Carol, I know you--
We have a form, yeah. No, I think it's a good idea.
Right, and we did go -- we did put a place a form out for everybody to review, and we took it to the committee. So when the schematic comes in, it's something that we're looking forward to do for our veterans organizations. And then finally, I know this would be the third time that we were again talking about the promotion-retention policy, and we know that our focus was on grades four to eight with the mathematics. And, you know, not just looking at retention, but first, what are we doing to avoid the retentions and looking at the aspirants in K to two? That would be our first move. We're working with the curriculum committee. We said, well, why don't we look at a universal screening tool or diagnostic that's valid and reliable for our students, that puts us on the same page, and lets us know where our students are really falling with respect to math and language arts, and then we could remediate there in beginning in K to two. We also discussed moving forward with the phonics program and moving back to phonics to support our reading program. We think that's very important also, so we do have something in mind. This phonics program that we're looking at would also address handwriting, that's a lost art, a skill, cursive, looking at second and third grade.
Well done.
Yeah, and the committee working very hard on this. And then we would also look at our math program. We talked about that next month. But the key thing that I want to make sure we put out in public is in grades four to eight, we're going to make math a course that you must pass. You must pass. Now, if you do not pass it, the recommendation would be that we would provide supports in the morning, say Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, for 30 minutes in the morning before school, an opportunity for those students that are not passing math. Because right now, you could pass math and move on, progress. Right, you could fail math and move on to fifth grade. So we would have a -- we would recruit teachers to work with those students based on -- we would also have the diagnostic backup materials, and they can move -- we would have the support in the morning. Ultimately, though, if they don't pass, we would offer a summer school. It would be our hope that we wouldn't need a summer school for elementary schools if we're putting all these supports in place during the year. So this would have been, I guess, our third reading of that proposal. I would put it into policy for the curriculum committee next month, and it's something that we would look to vote on. So as Trustee Finerty said, we need to get this out in May and June to our parents so they are aware of the change come September.
And they have to be aware that if they don't get a board of tutoring, they're not eligible for the summer.
Right. We want the students to take advantage of that. And, you know, with that, there comes some concerns we talked about in committee, and I know that Assistant Superintendent Lopez brought to attention. There are some that don't want to drop their children off at 10 to 8:00 in the morning. Well, again, it's your opportunity. It's there for you. It will be provided, and it would give us the much-needed extra additional instructional time that we're requesting.
Also, the work that the children would have to work on, that's going to come from their classroom teachers, I believe, correct?
Well, we would hope that. And we also talked about if we go with a specific math program, if there was an instructional component, that would also help on -- because we are in grade four to eight, one-to-one on the Chromebook, so that we could--
And design on the screen.
Yeah, we would have that also, an instructional design piece with that. That's where we are with the curriculum committee, promotion-retention, Field of Heroes, and of course, planning for the park.
Once again, the Field of Heroes, I just want to say, I think it's a great program. I want to thank Superintendent McGinn for starting it. I want to thank Superintendent Wanko for keeping -- Dr. Wanko for keeping it going in such a good manner. So, thank you.
I just have one question, Dr. Degnan. Recently, like within the last month, one of our neighboring school districts was not chastised, but was brought to the forefront of the news because of the fact that during an SAT testing session, that students were almost sitting on top of one another's laps, where it's required that they be seated four feet apart from one another and across from one another. Now, with regards to the park and the large group testing, are we making sure that students are not sitting less than? In other words, does this park have a minimum, like the SAT does, you have to be four feet--
The SAT does, and the College Board does, but you've got to remember, when they upload those tests, they're different tests also, when you open your screen.
Yeah, there's like, you know, test A. Test B, test C.
They do the different forms.
Park does.
Park does, yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that we're not going to even jeopardize the integrity of our testing in the big group setting.
We have the teachers set up the rooms. We -- when we do the training, we ask them to do their cards before they go in, alphabetical by number, so they're really saying -- we -- what we do is we work with facilities to put the tables out as they tell us that what they need. So that's the way we work it.
I want to pull into that. As our neighboring district--
We've had many visits from--
Okay, thank you.
We've had many visits, yes.
Thank you, Dr. Degnan. Thirty-two students from Bayonne High School participated in the National High School Model UN Conference in Manhattan. In only its second year of participation, Bayonne High School students captured the Award of Excellence for their second-place finish. Special thanks to Bayonne High School Social Studies teacher, Mac, Mr. Evan Wexler, who is a moderator of that group. Now, that concludes my portion of the report except for the budget presentation. So do we have any questions for me before I turn it over to Mr. Smith?
Can I make one comment?
If it's a good one, yes.
Absolutely. I am absolutely thrilled that Mr. Wexler has been able to bring this group of kids in the United Nations, like, forum up to the level. We are now, like, flipping on the map with United Nations. I think that's great, don't you?
Excellent job. Yes, you're correct.
Very good.
So at this time, Mr. Smith will provide an update on the safety grant and then deliver a PowerPoint presentation on the budget for the 2018, 2019 school year. Mr. Smith?
Thanks, Dr. Wanko. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. On Friday afternoon, I had the pleasure of going to Hackensack to meet with our subgroup insurance fund. We're eligible, and you'll see a resolution in tonight's -- on tonight's agenda, that this year, we're eligible for $73,000 in safety grant money. So we have to get our application in and do our homework. My office is on top of that, but I just wanted to let you know that last year, we got $53,000. So we're moving up that chain, so we're doing fairly well in that regard. So I wanted to let you know that. In regards to the budget, we put together a PowerPoint presentation for you to go over. This budget has been many weeks of many dedicated people in many meetings discussing many, many different topics. If the board sees fit this evening to approve the budget, then by Thursday, we will be obligated to send it to the county for their approval, their advice, and in turn, they will send it back to us for you ultimately to approve at a later board meeting. So with that said, if you'd like to turn around and follow the PowerPoint, we went to great lengths to get this done, and we'll continue, I hope. Bayonne Board of Education, first, a couple pages are purely informational. We have our mission statement. "The mission of the Bayonne Public School District is to provide optimum learning opportunities for all students in a safe, secure, inclusive learning environment that fosters personal and interpersonal growth, lifelong learning, and a strong sense of community. We believe the district's mission can be accomplished when administrators, teachers, parents, and the community collaborate as a team to accomplish its goals, which are: to set high standards and expectations for student achievement; to provide a safe environment conducive to learning; to meet the needs of our diverse multicultural school population; to provide a challenging curriculum by utilizing educational technologies that meet the needs of the 21st century; to provide programs that foster successful home, school, and community partnerships; and to provide teacher training and professional development." What is a school budget? A budget is a description of a financial plan. It is a list of estimates of revenues, tune, and expenditures by an entity for a stated period of time. Normally, a budget describes a period in the future, not the past. It is a plan for allocating resources, a plan for specifying how resources, especially money, will be allocated or spent during a particular period. It identifies the monies needed for particular purposes for a particular period of time. The budget in our district's financial plan to deliver and maintain the district's mandated and non-mandated programs, as well as our facilities for the students we serve. Once our budget is adopted, it is necessary to live within that plan. We know that there will be fluctuations from the plan and unforeseen circumstances. However, it is our duty to manage those changes effectively. The budget calendar, and starting probably in November, Matt met with all the budget managers, we refer to them as, our directors of curriculum, our principals, our directors in the repair and transportation department, and he skilled them in the nuances of System 3000, our budget platform, as to how to enter and take things out and look for things. So we did a great deal of work, and this is all based on Dr. Wanko's initiative of zero-based budgeting. And this was a very, very big learning curve for everybody in the district, ladies and gentlemen. It is not the way that we've conducted business for the last 100 years, let's say. Zero-based budgeting is new to us. We've embraced it. We're running with it, and the fruits of our labor, I think, will be evident to you. So these are some highlighted dates. On March 13th, the governor gave out his numbers, his state aid numbers, and we were quite fortunate to receive an increase in our state aid. March 27th, which is today, if you good people see fit to adopt it, the preliminary budget will be sent to the county superintendent, as I previously said. The other dates are dates in the very near future where we would have to advertise our budget if it were approved by the county. We would have to advertise for a public hearing, right in this room or in the auditorium if the crowd dictates that. And then we would have the public hearing, and the last date that we or you good people on the board can adopt that budget would be May 14th of this year. That is our budget calendar.
Questions?
Yes, please, feel free to jump in anytime.
At what point are we certain that the number we've been told is the number that we will get if the legislature has -- still has time to -- I'm sorry.
Yeah, we referred to the budget as the new governor's wish list, almost. And what happens? What happens if that money is not forthcoming? I did put an email out to the county superintendent of schools last week, and then she in turn sent it to Trenton, and they told me that it is highly improbable and unlikely that these numbers are going to change. Now, it can be 99.9, but there is always that possibility. Our budget will be set. If money is taken away, we will have to adjust what we've done and what we've planned for, and we are more than capable of that task.
Thank you.
So the Dr. Wanko's implementation, as I said, the process began, the budget managers, we met with them. The budget was then pared back. We had each director and principal in with the cabinet under Dr. Wanko's leadership, Mr. Lopez, Dr. Degnan, Matt Bolden, our accountant, Thomas Fogu from Technology, and Kim Dedamici from Special Services. And we asked them about their budget in the particular fields that pertained to curriculum, to special needs, to technology, to the budget itself, what they were spending on, why they were spending it. And I have to tell you that our good folks, our administrators, really dove down deep into the details of the budget. Everything from paperclips and Post-its to computers and technology items to special needs concerns. So it did run the gamut, those discussions. And those discussions were enlightening because we haven't done this before. And it's good to see what the folks in the trenches need to run the good programs that they run. These are our stakeholders in this. So it was good to hear from them, and we're going to move forward with that. As I said, there was a tremendous amount of work done, and we're very grateful for that. 218, 219, Bayonne Board of Ed budget, fiscally sustainable education, sustainable and fair levels of instructional spending, allowing for updating of our curriculum on an ongoing basis, the new K through math curriculum with increases in instructional spending across the board, and events out of the level, and evens out the level of spending for specials, art, music, gym, across the district. Dr. Degnan, I know that the curriculum committee met with a couple of the math providers. Do you want to give us a brief update? And just tell the board what the plan is rolling out these new curriculum initiatives?
Right, we like to roll out a curriculum every five years, so we have -- we haven't rolled out one, I guess, in six years, and the last one was our language arts literacy. So we decided we would start with the math. We're looking at three programs right now. We broke it down. We have stakeholders. We have our teachers. And what we do is I actually sat in for the three vendors that were the finalists, and then what I would do is the next step, I would, after I speak with our director, Aiello, and the stakeholders, I would come obviously to the curriculum committee and tell you why we picked those three. Then the next year, because of the next-generation science standards and the big focus on STEM and engineering tasks, we would definitely next look at science. Science would be the key for 1920, and then ultimately, English Language Arts, and then back to social studies. So we are back on a cycle. So it's wonderful news that we're getting back into the curriculum and those adoptions for our students, and we're going to have like a five- or six-year plan to roll that out. And I thank everybody in one cabinet to support this, as well as the trustees on the curriculum committee for that. So I'll be reporting next month on our math adoption. Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Degnan. Yes, Trustee Desmond?
I just, if you wouldn't mind quoting some numbers, you know, Matt? What people might not realize is the actual state aid, or any aid that we get for special needs and the actual cost--
Right.
-- to educate our kids.
Our special needs population, about 1,500, approximately 1,500 students. Costs the district's nearly $33 million, and that's from instructional standpoint to busing, to sending them out of district, to physical therapy, and everything that they need and everything that they deserve. What we get in return from the state is a little over $9 million. So you can see the disparity in what the state gives us in return for what we actually spend in those particular areas.
And I just want to be clear, this is what we want to be doing, but we do want to fight for more money in that particular area because we do it well, and--
In fact, I believe there was some talk in the legislature about having the state fully fund special needs. I would, you know, we would love to see that, you know, across the board. This, everybody's--
Sweetman Roserian.
Yeah, everybody's on a level playing field. Yes. This budget also allows for up to five new teachers as classrooms get too crowded, increasing the number of security aides in the schools. Now, if the city comes through with their promise of putting a police officer, a level three police officer, in each building, we might not need to hire those extra security aides. We would have a police presence. But bear in mind that when you have a police presence, they report to the police department. They do not report to Dr. Wanko and central administration or the building principal. They do not report to Dr. Waco and central administration, or the building principal. They report directly to police. But the savings in that area could be, could be very big for the, for the city as well, for the school system as well. It continues filling classrooms with substitutes. As you know, in January, we went to source for teachers. Our fill rate now is, is much higher than it has ever been. We are filling those classes, Mr. Copaz, what is it, about 96% fill rate now?
Uncertain.
I'm sorry, I should have told you, I was gonna-
On certain days.
Yeah.
Most days, we are up over 85%.
Right.
And that's, you know, that's where we were at 45, 50%.
Forty-five and fifty, which means principals were scrambling to either mix classes together, put classes in common areas, or the class might go uncovered, and teaching was not happening. With source for teachers, though, the flip side of that coin is that our cost for substitute has risen, because we're utilizing many more substitutes throughout the district. But this budget does take that into consideration. New early intervention programs for our at-risk students in kindergarten through grade two, as well as remedial math programs for grades four through eight across the district. This budget also allows for fair and reasonable settlements of all of our collective bargaining commitments and contracts, ladies and gentlemen. The next slide is a graph. It shows the last five years of our student population. If you take a look at it, we are on the increase once again. The demographers' report says that by 2022, which is four and a half, five years away, we are going to grow by another 460 students, approximately. So we'll be well over that 10,000-student level. It may necessitate that the district, which we are looking into, we've met with our architect and engineering consultants, as well as bond counsel. We may have to go out and look to build a new building. But that's something that this board will bring you up to date, up to speed, when we get to that. The next is our free and reduced percentages. And you can see where they've been fluctuating. Now, why are these percentages important? They're important because our E-rate reimbursement is directly tied to our, to our student-free and reduced lunch percentages. That's money we get back for, for services, communication services, and internet services through the federal government, through USAC, the United States Administrative Code, and they send back that money to us. In fact, we've just finished the paperwork up, I believe, for 217, so we're waiting to see what our allotment will be. But this allows us to put these points of access in schools, to go out and get Chromebooks for our students, to do all those things that help level the playing field for a district like Bayonne being so underfunded with some of our suburban neighbors. So we're happy about that. What we're doing, we meet with the principals monthly. It's a monthly item on my agenda, that make sure that the students are filling out the applications, whether online, or whether on, you know, paper, paper and pencil, and getting them into us, so we can make sure that those who are in need and those who are eligible do receive a free and/or reduced lunch. As you know, we're a universal breakfast program. We, we offer breakfast to every student in the district, regardless of their parent's income. So we're very happy about that, and that will consider, will be different. That, that doesn't affect the E-rate, though, as much as the free and reduced lunch percentages. The next slide is telling. I'm going to try to hit the pointer. It's a 10-year comparison of our local tax levy over the last 10 years. And glaring at the bottom of it, 29 through 212, or three zeros. 214 and 15 was another zero. You good folks have tried to make up for that over the last three years, collectively over 10%. But once you take these zeros down here, you lose that compounding effect, ladies and gentlemen. If we just had that 8% there, you know, it's probably close to another $4 million, so to speak, if we just were able to take the 2% over those years. So I want to just see it in this way. The annual growth compounded over the last 10 years is about 1.81%.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, let me go back to it.
To the 0% change?
Go ahead.
How did that happen? 0%?
Well, we, these years down here, these three years, in fact, up to, I believe, 214, 215, where it was an elected board. Prior to that, it was Board of School estimate. The Board of School estimate was made up by the mayor, two council people, and two board members. So although the board members went in with every anticipation of asking for 2% or more, they were always voted down, three to two, by the mayor and the council members, who were, you know, said they were looking out for the taxpayers of the city of Bayonne. So it's gone on. In fact, I believe if we were to go back further, you would see two more zeros, and so it runs the gamut of many administrations over many years. Hopefully, we're past this now with an elected board, knowing the value of what we need to do and how we need to do it, and we're moving forward with that. But I thought that you should see this particular slide.
Thank you.
Okay. State aid comparison over the last 10 years, and again, telling. If you look at 2009, 2010, the bottom one, when I came in as the SBA, this is how I was greeted by our governor then, Chris Christie. He took 10, 10 and a half percent from us, ladies and gentlemen. Over $4.5 million of reduction in the state aid. Think where we would be in terms of that nowadays, if he had just left it alone, gave us a zero, gave us a zero, but took over 10% from us. And again, these are events, financial events, that you don't recover from quickly, unless it's a complete turnaround. Now, the state aid has gone up, you know, the next year, we got 5.4, 6.4, but in 13, 14, we took a negative. We took a hit of a, of a half a percent. Okay? Oops, Deggan, help me. Help me, Deggan. He's my tech guy.
But again, it's compounded.
Yeah. And then if you compound that out-
You get hit again and again, it's just a constant hit.
You compound that out, what did I do, Dex?
You hit it all.
Yeah. My fat fingers hit the wrong button. Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's the Italian.
Yeah, I'm talking, I'm talking with the, with the pointer. We called this an intermission at the DeWitt many years ago on a Saturday, where you got 35 cartoons at a Laurel and Hardy festival for 35 cents.
I shouldn't be acknowledging that I know about that, but I was there. Yes.
Yeah. I don't know, did it overheat? Those figures, those figures may have made it overheat.
Maybe.
Okay, we think we had it. Historical budget, operating budget funding. Come back, come back. Right there, we're right there. Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
Can you go back one second?
Certainly.
I just wanted to point out, because you had made the point, you had said that the elected board had come on.
Oh, your home board, right?
The elected board had come on in 2015, 2016.
I think it was 14, 15?
It was actually 2016, 2017, because we all took-
Okay.
-office January 2016. So-
Okay.
You know, the last three were us.
Okay.
That zero wasn't us. That was the last school board.
No, I didn't say that. Okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's not what you said. You said the right thing.
No, you said we came on 2014, 2015.
This is where you came in, right here, at the three, right?
Sixteen, no, one more.
No, one more, 2.78.
2.78? Okay.
Sixteen and seventeen.
So you can see that you good folks, like I said, have been doing your due diligence and, and giving us the tools that we need to, to work through this.
So this year, we're proposing a 2.87?
Yeah, it's gonna-
Okay, thank you.
We're gonna come, actually, it's a little less than that when we-
Sorry.
2.87?
Yeah, that's what it says.
All right, the operating budget, where does Bayonne School District receive its funding from? The district receives the majority of its operating budget from local sources. That's the local tax levy, ladies and gentlemen, approximately 52.2% of the 18, 19 budget. The other largest source is from the state of New Jersey School Aid, which is approximately 45.7%. The remainder is mostly from local user fee-based revenue, such as facility rentals, the ice rink, Lincoln Community Pool, our auditorium, gymnasiums, before and after care, solar, and invest, and interest revenue. This makes up 1.8% of the budget. The federal semi, the special education Medicare incentive, where we are reimbursed for certain visits to the child study team, for PT, for physical therapy, for things that are special needs students. We are also reimbursed at a 0.3% of that. Keep in mind that expenses can and do change during the year. The main revenues do not. School boards in New Jersey are required to submit balanced budgets where revenues equal expenditures. Next slide. Did I go on too many? The historical budget comparison operation for the last five years. You can see where our budget is growing, and that's due to the increase in state aid and the local tax levy. So I just wanted to give you a fair assessment of the direction that we're going in, in that particular regard.
One quick question.
Yep.
Mrs. Arce, proposed budget for this year, does that include the additional funding that Governor Murphy has given us?
Yes, yes, it does.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
That's why I asked the question.
This is the operating budget breakdown. As you can see, where our money is spent and how it's spent, I won't read through each and every item, but it runs the gamut of everything that we do in district, ladies and gentlemen. From general education, special ed, adult and vocational, athletics and extracurricular, child study teams and therapies, guidance, library, school curriculum and administration, central admin, facilities, security, transportation, benefits, and tuitions to charter schools. I believe we're up, close to 50 charter school students now, Matt, right?
The projection went up again, but those aren't always 100% accurate. But it, it has been ticking up slowly over the last five or six years.
Yeah. So those charter schools are, are, you know, taking some of our students. And remember, when we do get a charter school student, we're obligated to send 90% of what it costs our district to that charter school, so the money does follow the student. Our operating budget breakdown, this is also kind of telling, if you take a look at it. Ladies and gentlemen, right, oop, oop, sorry, fat fingers, once again. Right here, our total salaries in district, $85 million, $85,261,101 dollars are 65% of our budget. The benefits are another $25 million. So you can see on $130 million, $110 million are pure salaries and benefits, and that's for all staff, from admin, right down to bus drivers, custodians, substitutes, everything. It leaves us with a little over $20 million to do all the other things that we need to do in district. And those other things are non-salary instructional costs, energy, communications, and insurance, tuitions in some charter schools, and facilities and transportation services. This keeps overheating, I think, Dex. We'll have to get Thomas Fogu on the line. I think that's where we are, 218. So it leaves us with a little over $20 million to do all the other good things that we do in the district. 218, 19, special revenue or grant budget. Special revenue fund is primarily federal funds, which are passed through the state of New Jersey or state grants directly from Trenton, where only allowed to budget for 85% of the prior year's award. The major federal grants are IDEA, the Individual Disability Act, and ESSA, Every Student Shall, Every Student Succeeds Act, or more readily identifiable as titles grants, or Titles 1, 2, 3, et cetera. IDEA, or the Individuals with Disability Education Act, is a federal program which helps to fund special education costs in the school districts across the country. We changed over to charging out-of-district special education tuitions, instead of salary costs, which is saving the district approximately $400,000 a year, and this is something that Matt instituted when he came in. So that was a great savings for the district. ESSA grants are as follows. Title I, this improves basic elementary-age programs through offering funding for teachers who serve solely children who are economically and/or socially disadvantaged. We have 22 teachers in the district funded by this program.
One quick question, Matt. Mr. Snid, the funding for their salaries, not 100%, is it?
No, we, it, it can be an offset. If it's a higher, higher-salary teacher, sometimes we'll take a percentage of that higher salary and allocate it to the grant. If it's a, a new teacher not making that much, it won't be the full 100%, okay? Because they would have to spend, I believe, 100% of the time with that particular program.
The title teachers are funded 100% by the grant.
Some are, though, but not all.
Right.
Right now?
No, all the teachers are funded. We are funding, and we've, we've made improvements. I've worked with Dr. Deggan closely, you know, to make sure that, yes, the title teachers are 100% funded by the federal grant. We don't, we're not offsetting that with local revenues, and they're very strict when they come in.
Yeah. You can supplant, you can-
Taylor Donovan does a fantastic job with the monitors when they come in. They're really strict. I was impressed when I came in right away, because districts can easily have 20-something findings, and I think in the past, they haven't been here yet, but she does a great job in making sure that we don't supplant what the general education. So it's very, you know, particular what those teachers do in the district.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
The Title II grants, funds dedicated for teacher training, those workshops that you approve every month, also known as professional development. Title III, and Title III Immigrant Language Instruction for English, English Language Learners. The district also receives school-based youth grants, which helps to fund our student youth center. The district also administers various non-public school grants for the non-public schools located in Bayonne. Finally, there are some local grants administered through this fund. Some of the companies located in Bayonne, such as IMTT, Bayonne Community Bank, Investors Savings Bank, CarePoint Health, Robert Wood Johnson slash St. Barnabas, have been very generous over the years. Generally speaking, these local grants are earmarked for a specific purpose, such as Special revenue fund analysis, you can see over the last three years, it has, it goes up, it goes down, but there again, we are only budgeting 85% of the prior, prior year's funding into the particular grant for our use. Our cost per pupil, again, another telling slide, ladies and gentlemen. It doesn't seem like much, but when you look at a North Bergen, and their budgeted per pupil cost is, you know, 200 and, you know, $280, $290 more than Bayonne. Okay, it doesn't seem like a lot. If you multiply that by Bayonne's 10,000 students, it's $2.9 million if we were getting what they were getting, okay? So it's, it's kind of tough. And also, this, this section here, percent of state revenue, where Bayonne is receiving 47.3%, you go down, Jersey City's getting almost 80%. Union City, 88% of their budget funded by the state, and the next one, West New York, before it went off, also in the 80, 86% of what they're getting from the state. So you can see they're almost getting, in some cases, it could be close to double of what we're getting from the state. Hopefully, they work out and they, they start following the formula. I know it was one of Governor Murphy's initiatives to do it. This is almost a tale of the haves and the have-nots. And then if you go over here, what we're spending out of our money, the cost of instruction, we're spending 67% of it, and they're spending 51% or 60%. Again, a telling, telling slide. We'll move across. This, again, is just a, a bar graph of the previous slide, so you get a, a better, a better handle of it. Cost per pupil, the previous data shows that while Bayonne receives the second lowest percentage of its budget from state aid, it maintains the highest percentage of costs spent on classroom instruction and the lowest actual budget. spent on classroom instruction and the lowest actual budgeted cost per pupil. It is important to also note that the community has a district group factor of a CD. District group factors range from the lowest A, B, C, D, E to the highest, which is based on socioeconomic status. Our percentage of students on the free or reduced lunch is just over 55% as reported on the October 15, 2017 OSHA report, and that's the application for state school aid. The current income levels to obtain a free or free lunch for a child is, a family of four is $31,980, and the current income level to obtain a reduced lunch for a family of four is $45,510. We move into the future. Governor Murphy's funding plan, the new governor has announced a plan to fund school districts which are underfunded to a greater extent than those which are not. The additional state aid, if received over the next few years, would go to collective bargaining agreements, more educators and personnel, while at the same time keeping the tax increase as, at a reasonable level. Healthcare costs, very important in our budget. We've budgeted, I believe, at Dr. Wanko's request, originally, the finance committee, we had a discussion, and we had budgeted an increase of 15%. This past January, we had an increase of over 13%, so we jacked it up to 17 and 1/2, 18% that we've budgeted for healthcare. The problem with the state employees' health plan is that the larger districts, Newark, Elizabeth, have left that pool. That pool has now shrunk, where the liability would come out on districts like Bayonne. So we may see an increase this January of 219. What we are going to do, and we discussed it at finance, is that we are going to run a claims experience report probably at the end of June. We'll get our claims experience for this past year. We'll have that at the ready, usually in August or early September. The state comes out with the increases at the state level for those insurance plans. If it is over what we've budgeted, we will shop our insurance around to a new carrier to see if we can get a more favorable rate and keep those costs where they need to be. So healthcare, it's important to help control healthcare costs. The board has begun this by implementing a self-insured prescription plan with six months of data. In the results, it looks very positive. We're hopeful for over $300,000 savings as compared to last year. And this should help to offset the 13.2 rate increase we had with the state health benefit plans this past January. We anticipate a significant increase this coming January 1st, as I've said, and this has been because of the exodus of the larger schools. And facilities, immediate future part two, facilities and security. The school district recently, July 1, became a Type II school district. This allows for the district to obtain back debt service aid from state, approximately 40% of the SDA, School Development Authority-approved facility renovations. And so if we go out to do a project now, we can get back from the state once the project is complete, up to 40% of what we spent on a particular project, which is rather good. The district intends on augmenting our existing security features with secure vestibule areas where possible in each school. We met with our architect this week, with Assistant Superintendent Kopaz and Mr. Kubert, Mr. Pacina. These locked vestibules are in other districts. It keeps people at bay until we can properly screen them. We've also received the first order, as Dr. Wanko said earlier in his presentation. We've received the first of our 13 metal detectors, and our handheld wands are in. The rest are coming next week, and we'll take them. Our crew is going to have them up and running in each of the elementary schools, and they will be trained by former police officer Tim Carey, who is on our security detail here at the high school. Additionally, the district is working on prioritizing the necessary work needed on its buildings, which average 83 years of age, with some over the century mark. We'll focus on roof masonry work, HVAC, some of which have a positive payback on the investment in reduced energy costs. And the last slide, you'll be happy to see, it's a slide that you're probably anxious. Thank you. I have to give thanks, though, to Matt, Laura Z., Lori Mariano, Christine Ellison in my office. The cabinet under Dr. Wanko's leadership was very, very instrumental. This was a team effort in putting this together, and for the graphics, I have to give credit to my daughter Tara, who helped me out with that, because I'm not artistically inclined. So if you have any questions, ladies and gentlemen, we'll be happy
I just want to thank your department and Dr. Wanko for having the foresight to make some heavy-duty changes in how you approach things, particularly zero-based budgeting, which I think is a great learning experience for the adults in the room. And this was nicely done. Thanks.
Thanks, everybody.
Yes, I'd like to also thank Mr. Smith and his staff, Matt and Laura. Thank Dr. Wanko and his group, Dr. Deggan and Mr. Kopaz. I'd like to thank all the principals and directors, and everyone that put their time in. I'd like to thank the board finance committee for the hours. They came over here and spent time and working on this, and I think the highlight of this is that everybody can see. It's probably as transparent as we could possibly make this, and I think that's a terrific thing.
I think this is wonderful for everybody's sake.
Mr. Smith, I'd just like to ask, will this be made available for the public? Put it on the website?
We get this, we can get the presentation. Absolutely. We'll put the
I'll have to hand out to you for today.
The PowerPoint?
Definitely.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, great. So they can see this is a mean budget.
Dr. Mader, back to you.
Just to remind everybody, they received a notice from school boards on the topic of school funding 101. It's being held on Saturday, April 28. If anyone would like to be registered, please get in touch with either Laura or myself, and we'll set you up. This is a Saturday from 9:30 to 11:30. It's on your emails from school boards. At this time, I'll start with our agenda, our approval of amendments, and our communications haven't changed from the packet that I sent home. Do I have any volunteers to move in second?
Second.
And I'm sorry, who is the second?
The packet from the room.
Thank you. And we have two commendations this evening that we're going to be giving out. I'll start the consent agenda. Curriculum Committee met. There were three items. The agenda was approved by trustee Pruden, and it was seconded by trustee Valak at their meeting. Moving along to finance. Finance also, then, on 28th. We, Resolutions B1 and B2 were done at committee, and they were signed. B3 in the packets I put out today is the revised claims and accounts with the final B4 to B10, we're all done at the committee. And I will ask you to turn to B11. We'll start with that. It's, we're submitting the 2018 safety grant program application. You'll see we're sending that in for $73,022.83. Let the record show that Vice President Will Back with us.
We're on B11.
We had a series of bids in the last two weeks. I'll start with B12, is an award of a bid, Bayonne High School door and frame replacement. CNM Door Control, they were the only bidder. And we did accept the bid, the resolutions in front of us for tonight. Then we had special ed transportation. There are two separate resolutions. I'll start with B13, which is an award of a group of routes, lowest bidder. But I point out on B14, second paragraph, with respect to the below-identified special ed transportation routes, 207B, 200, from A&amp;S Transportation Services. But has, but has based upon review of general counsel of the Board of Ed determined that A&amp;S is not the lowest qualified and responsible bidder as defined by law? So even though they possibly were the low bid
We, if I may, if I may, Mr. President, if there are any questions related to this particular clause of the resolution, we should discuss it in close because it's potential to get in.
If you have any questions on this, please hold it until we get back. B15, Robinson School Roof Replacement, and you'll see a list of the vendors and the award. Contract number one, $137,000. Next up is an agreement with High Bridge Learning Group, a state-approved agency. It's a functional behavioral assessment for a classified student. B17 is agreement with Galexi, the center of Princeton, also for an evaluation for a classified student. And then finally, on finance, approval of the 2018-19 school year maximum travel expenditure. This is a resolution we do yearly, and it sets a price for the district for the year. Okay, so that is our finance portion. It was moved by trustee Desmond and seconded by trustee Munoz. Moving along, we'll start with personnel. They also had their committee on March 20. I'm going to ask that C1 and C2 have been revised, so we'll do those in size. C3 and C4, we're done at committee, and also C5. We'll turn to C6, and I'll ask Mr. Kopaz, I'll give our monthly harassment, intimidation, and bullying report.
Thank you, Dr. Mader. In accordance with the Bayonne Board of Education, Policy 5512, during this reporting period, five incidents of harassment, intimidation, and bullying have been reported and investigated at the following schools. One incident at Henry E. Harris, one incident at Philip G. Vroom, one incident at John M. Bailey, one incident at Washington Community School, and one incident at Bayonne High School. In all five of these cases, there was no confirmed evidence of the investigative acts of HIB. Strategies, resources, and remedial measures were implemented. All documentation is being retained by the school anti-bullying coordinators.
Thank you, Mr. Kopaz. Okay, C7 to C14, we're all done at committee. This will take us to C15, and this is a revision of previous resolution. It's being revised to add Mr. Smith, along with Kenneth Kopaz, as our school safety specialist. And that concludes personnel, and that was moved by trustee Ryan, and it is seconded by trustee Fenner. Our non-consent portion of the agenda, D1 and D2, are going to be for inside. At this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Smith. Resolution D3 is the adoption of the tenement budget for 2018-19 school year. Any questions that can be asked out here? Obviously, if it's anything negotiations, personnel-related, we'll have to save those questions for inside. So if there's any questions out here on the resolution, will there be questions inside on the resolution? We'll find out. Okay. So that is all I have for out here. Anything else from administration? No?
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
The 2018-2019 proposed calendar. How many staff development days do we have on this calendar this year?
We have three full day, and then four abbreviated sessions. I believe trustee Munoz, you made a recommendation from the year before. I think we had six, so we cut it back to four, which gives the teachers the amount of hours that if they make call of the staff training, full day abbreviated sessions, they would get to 20 hours that is state mandated.
And none of that could be done through Safe Schools?
Oh, it is. It's just, we have to give them the time to do that. All of our mandatory training, a lot of our training is done online, using Safe Schools, which is free to the district, but we still do have to provide the time for them to take that training.
All right, thank you.
Not hearing any other questions. We will adjourn for legal, personnel, and negotiations items. It is 7:17, and the board will be back to the public room.